But it's not illegal.
Not illegal, they fall. It was.
Only if they're all related.
It's an exempt, you think it's an exempt subdivision?
If you follow the one-two sell-off rule.
One-two sell-off.
So this whole thing?
That's how it's always been done. So I'm just saying by the way that Jeff did it and I did it and I was talking of it. All rules were followed the way it's told to be done.
But the one-two sell-off, the child lots that you were talking about, they were created after the May 1st of 2011. If you read your documents, it says that permitted for any tract or contiguous tract of land under the same ownership and existing as of May 1st, 2011. So these child ones that they're selling off, they wasn't in existence before May 1st, 2011. They can't split and sell off like the old ones can. The child ones haven't had more child divisions. Only the parent can split off twice and then that's the end of your division. You can't say, well, I give it to my kid and now my kid gives it to his two kids. If it wasn't in existence before May 1st, 2011, they don't get to split again.
Divided in Washington, Carolina. I'm not saying that that's not wrong, but I'm just saying.
That's what's in your.
I know, but I'm just saying that there's a lot of child numbers out there that are still very big parcels that have been created after 2011. And we're saying that since it didn't look that, you can't divide them again. Fifty years later.
Well, without coming, they won't be exempt themselves. As exempt, they have to come forward and be divided in a regular subdivision manner. They're just no longer exempt because they were created after the deadline.
Thanks, Max, and I think I have to reiterate that. No, I'm certainly not, and I don't hear from anybody else saying that these should not be subdivisions, these should not be allowed. They should, but they should not be exempt. And they should have to go through our process.
When do we tell them that? Like Danielle said, is it after the beginning or after people already bought it? And that's why I'm saying, if that's what we're gonna do, that's fine. But the reporter sees it first, so do I need to go tell them? Hey, when you see a survey come through with more than one tract on it, ask them if that's gonna be a subdivision, if they're gonna make money on it? If it is, send a tract to the office first.
We need to, Travis needs to be the one that makes the call, not them assuming that. Yeah.
But is that once it's recorded? Or once someone already buys in it? This is, this is why I always get so frustrated. And it's not against you guys, it's just the courthouse in general. And it happens everywhere. I've already bought it from Danielle. I bought it last Thursday, money is in your bank account. Next Wednesday, it gets mailed to me at work. Are you, is Danielle gonna give me my money back because what she did was right?
Again, the surveyor's office will be the first one to catch it if anything is replatted and split and surveyed, right?
After it's already been sold, after. Say I bought it, this is just hypothetical, I've never bought property from Danielle. But she's gonna sell some, even if it's not a split. It's already money, I've already wrote the check, I've got my mortgage debt goes to Danielle. And either the week of or the week after, two weeks, wherever that title company decides to bring it in, or I walk in over myself, I've already spent my money. Now, whose responsibility? I'll catch it, that's fine. But whose responsibility is it? Because now I've already bought it, whose responsibility is it to do that? Or if it's a contract?
That'd be a good question for the Indiana State Surveyors Association.
Or for John Mead, our attorney.
Good thinking, too.
I understand.
You could call up the state and ask.
I'll, I'll see what they tell me, but I guarantee you that they're gonna say, it happens everywhere. I mean, when this thing was first created, about the subdivision splits, and you guys have to accept to every title company in town, blah, blah, blah.
Try it too.
So we should probably do that. Because the title company is gonna hit it before money's transferred, before it hits the courthouse. And then we can be in the backup. But somebody needs to know before the money's already. If we're worried about the people living there and their concerns, shouldn't we worry about it before they've already gave? Money? That's where I'm going from. Whenever they're standing in front of me and I say, you can't do that, it's too late. And I don't mind being the bad person, but it's, if you come to me or your kids come to me, are you gonna be mad that I sent them out? Or can send you out because it doesn't work? We can do it, that's fine, that's our job. But then where do they go? What process do they go to? I just think that other kids should be known outside of me and outside of the courthouse. That this is the way it needs to be. Because it's always been done this way, so another one's watching my things, they've always done it this way. I'm not saying nothing's right, it's always been done this way. Everyone knows it's done this way, everyone knows how to get around it. We called Travis, we called Travis, I don't know, just in this year we called you because we thought we had a certain split that is a subdivision. We tried to, we, it's not like we wanna catch them, but like, we don't want it to be done wrong. We call you, at least three times this year, I think we've called. And.
Well, yeah, at least.
I mean, we try and catch them. I just think that it should happen before any of this, should it be the first sell-off? You can't sell your property, you can't split your property at all without it being a subdivision?
But again, it becomes in one amount of time. I mean, how far historically do we go back to decide that this has been split multiple times? Every property in the county has been split multiple times. I've got 120 acres, so this part of what was once a large property and it was family that divided that off.
Well, even like, and I'm, just this property in general, I researched it back to whenever it was first bought just to see if this might have been the way we've always done it. We made a mistake in my office because we made mistakes. Everyone makes mistakes, no one perfect. It was a. It's no offense, but it was spouses deeding to themselves, that's an NA. That's how they got the first piece of property. Then, I'm assuming they got divorced, I don't know that in real life, but he deeded to her that piece of property, so she got the whole, it wasn't a split, she got what was, she got that number plus a split from what was there. That counts as a number one, because you're not related, but it doesn't count as a number one because technically the order that it got done in, she was a neighbor. So there's another one that doesn't count. You see where I'm going with that? There's already two.
The intention of what our orders say and the way they're used.
So when it started, it was family. And I assume that it had to be done this way for reasons that are unfamiliar to me, that more property was acquired. But that's two, that doesn't count. And then she had it surveyed into five. And I saw surveys come in that looked just like that, and it's because a grandpa or a great-grandpa wants to be sure that in his mind, his kids are all took care of and there's gonna be no argument when they pass away. And there might be five kids, but four of them don't want anything to do with one ground, they don't want any of that property. So only one of them gets it in any different way. So that happens. People survey it and put tracks on them all the time, but they never do anything with them. Or for years, they don't do anything with them. And just because he's wanted that doesn't mean he had it written down, but that's the way it's gonna happen. We don't know your intention behind the survey.
Well, I'll tell you what I believe, I believe the lady that owns this property is doing it, she's selling off parcels for gain. And I would consider her a developer.
Then that's okay, but in my office, I don't get to make that call.
If she's a developer, she builds a new road, that takes it a subdivision. Says so right in our orders.
But when it comes to offices, we can only do what we can. Dana Kennedy said exactly what I instructed them to do. And I'll take the blame with the tongue. I instructed them, this is what happens.
Well, there's no way you could have taught.
It's stuff. Because that's how I was instructed when I got hired.
All right, so the question is, what are we gonna do about this?
I think it's always gonna be a problem. I don't know if there's a way to get around it myself. And that's just me being serious because I work in it every day, I don't know. You guys might go home and think about it, hold on to the answer, and I'm the one that hear it, but it's just.
I mean, had someone not drove by and saw it, you wouldn't know it. And you can't, I'm talking about Travis because he.
He wouldn't know.
Yeah, it's Big County, you can't see everything, you can't drive around with police lights because.
Yeah, well, it popped up in one day, I mean, what, you know, in a week. I mean, I don't drive.
Probably took a week, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you don't drive every road every week.
Unless a neighbor called and was like, hey, I think there are roads being put in, you go with it this, I mean. But they might not have, I mean, just because you're putting none in, they might have thought by looking at it, oh, she's got eight acres, they're more person, they don't know it's gonna be three pieces. Just looking.
Did see it three real estate times.
Okay.
So can we go back to what Max brought up about the November 11th? Because I hadn't thought that, or November 2011.
And that's probably true, but I was never taught that either, so. There's a link that I was brought from my office just today by Max.
I kinda just kept reading and then I got to that point and I was like, yeah, that's a long time ago, kinda thing. I didn't think about it like that. So is that what, is what Max said? How he interprets that, is that the way? We think it is?
So I can say, the way I was taught, and it could be wrong, is when I became a new property owner, then it starts over. Like that is a child number that was a sell-off, but I'm a new property owner, so I get carried by it. So then it just, the cycle begins again. That's how I was taught, I don't know.
But it wasn't in existence on the deed prior to it's out, because your name's a new, new name on the deed. It wasn't in existence on the books prior to 2011.
That's what I question, why would they have, why would that have been, why would a deed have been put in if it didn't mean something?
Because that's the way that.
Yes, I agree, you.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if I was ever told that in my office, that even felt like the next new name of the, clearly it's 2023, we can't do that, it's not 2011. But the way that the whole courthouse motion, it's a new property owner, so that's where you did.
Well, I guess that may first.
Follow the new. You like follow the new stuff that you're doing.
That only applies to letter C, right? Not letter B. So.
Um, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know if that's what you just said is true or not.
I think it, I mean, I haven't read the thing, but it's only, that date's only listed on receipt. It's not listed like A and B, and it's not listed as like would include all of them, but I don't have that future.
I don't know if it wouldn't be a bad idea to have the opinion of John Mead or somebody weigh in on Emily's, on your processes.
We don't, we don't have to say that way, that's just, it's a number brought up to change it, so that's the way.
Yeah, we've talked to John numerous times about this section, it's never, I mean, I don't wanna speak for him, but I don't think that's the intent of what we have for the exemptions, but he, I mean, it's never been that brought up that May 1st, 2011. So, but something new, I don't.
All these exemptions do is throw it back on.
It just leaves a gray area. And I.
It's, apparently it's intentional. Kick the can down the road.
Here's another thing that you guys might wanna think about. Look at the sale letters, they go to like six and seven right after what Max is reading. The county auditor shall not accept an exempt subdivision for transfer unless it has been stated and approved by the plan director or staff. Our auditor doesn't, it matches, that's us. They used to have the paper maps, they don't have them anymore, we've had them for hours, we know how to play before 2011. I don't think that they should have, I mean, that doesn't make sense in the courthouse. Because the reporter sees it first and then we divide it out, so.
The mayor goes into the auditor's office?
It goes into like.
Or the.
Yeah.
First?
Yeah. I would already stand it approved by them, it's, I would, you know, like, even deeds, they get them, like, I get them and they such, I'll just get them in the auditor's office. I don't really know why they would even know that. Like, look, they used to, I think maybe the then, I don't know, but they did draw the maps before like this came about, it was all on paper, and they were in control of those paper maps, but they're not anymore. So that would've made sense at that time, because they were doing the mapping, but they don't do the mapping anymore. That's another thing like, that's probably, it's a question for John, but like, why would it be the auditor?
Because they have old records for the county.
The auditor? Or the reporter?
They have two.
But like even if they would stamp off one, like, the auditor's office, I don't know, do they stamp off what's on the means? That are approved?
Yeah, because it goes to the commissioners.
And the auditor stamps it? So maybe that's what it means.
Well, yeah, I think that's what it means. Because when you guys approve the subdivision, then it goes to the commissioners and when we approve, it's the auditor, being the secretary for the commissioners, has its say.
So that's saying that even if it was an exempt one, like if that was a, it should probably stand right here and then the auditor's office, that's what that's saying. So the number one is surveying.
So then if that one's exempt, they still have to go through the hoops, do they not?
Never have before.
Huh?
They never have before. I'm not saying that's right, I'm just saying that's how it functions. Not throwing anybody under the bus.
Because Travis is the one that's telling the statistics. Right?
That's what kills me is I don't know how, how do, how do I know as a property owner that I need to go to Travis to get that exemption? Like, I just feel like, hey, it's.
Oh, yeah, there.
You know, I don't know that if I'm, if I'm.
That's kind of what I said, I think it should happen before. I don't know how to get that information out, I don't even know if that's an answer, but.
Yeah, that's kind of where I come from on this is, as, you know, as a CSGP guy, if I didn't wanna drive by this, what we're talking about, I can see those signs, that's a larger common plan of development. That, that's definitely in violation of the CSGP. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna knock on homeowner's doors and wanna know why, who the developer is, and why there's not a plan with a state on that, and they don't, and I didn't just inherit it if this complaint, if this plan commission calls it a subdivision or not. It's a larger common plan of development over an acre. And those owners don't have the opportunity, I mean, because the developer never had to go through any of these checklist items. I mean, somebody thought it had, and made these lots two acre lots, but if they were half acre lots, people are still selling and doing what they wanna do on them because they never came before us, and I don't. I don't understand, I don't understand how we, how we can go through that loophole, but.
The reason they got through the loophole is because there was an existing driveway, so they weren't required to get a 911 address, so they weren't required to get with the highway superintendent about access off the road, because the main road was already there, been there for eons. That's how they get a, that's how it slipped through cracks right there.
It could've been a simple call over to my office, not presenting this as a subdivision and said, hey, I just bought this piece of property, I'm thinking about, you know, maybe, or they said, how many times can I divide it? Well, is it part of a subdivision? Was, you know, whatever. No, it's not, it's just a piece of property, how many times can I divide it? Twice, okay, good enough.
And they did it twice, or if it's not, they're not doing it twice.
And then there you go. Or I'm gonna make two divisions, one's gonna be to whoever and one's gonna be to my brother. Well, that's one division. Not two, you don't even get close to the subdivision requirements.
I think that also it hits a difference because when you work in it every day, the vermin is different, but a survey is different than a plaque.
So tell me what the difference is.
Like your survey, you want your property surveyed.
Yeah, we just have your surveyor, put your place.
Okay, it's a survey, founder's survey, however you wanna word it, it's a survey. What's hers farms is in a survey. It's a plaque, because they divided it and everybody lost. It had rules of whatever, the government's everyone, all the stuff.
They would protect those, they got it approved by this.
So whenever it gets recorded, it gets recorded as a plaque, whereas these get reported as surveys.
Okay, so I got my survey. I want to sell.
Okay, so you just had your property surveyed?
Yes, and we put all the tracks together, back together into one. So now it's all one big chuckle.
And that's it got recorded yet? I don't know, okay, it's got recorded, so it's all your parcels by the one?
One.
Okay. But say you wanted, you had that survey done, it was already one, but you wanted to make it all those tracks. Should you, is that a subdivision?
No, because it's not for the dividend, it was not for the purpose of offer, sale, lease, or development.
At the time.
At the time. So is it when the first?
At the time.
Is it with the, that's the time of the first sale?
I don't know.
Is that the time when it becomes a true subdivision?
Oh, when you had the survey done, your intent was not to make money, but you, you could've, you didn't, but you could've made it have more than one tract, but your intent was not to make money. But maybe 25 years later, your intent changed. So is that at the time that it becomes a subdivision? Or is it at the time that your survey was done? And I guess that's a question for John.
Other than with the intent of dividing a piece of property, what would be the reason why somebody would have it?
They own to the bank and they own a hundred acres and they need a mortgage, they wanna refinance and they don't wanna, they don't lose all hundred, they don't wanna lose ten. I don't know. I mean, I don't know why people do things, but.
But at that.
That happens, people do that sometimes.
At that point, you're dividing the property. Because if at that point I defaulted on my loan, the bank is going to take that divided 10 acres.
I just, I don't know, I think it should be easier than someone's intention or if you've got five pieces of property subdivision. It's a, it comes in as a subdivision.
What if they don't wanna call anybody, they just get on our website look everything up? And then all of a sudden, just like Emily was saying, they never even called me, I mean, well, we're not breaking no rules, we followed the ordinance, and all of a sudden it's in front of her, in front of the reporters, it's too late.
Except they never had, you never stamped approved, like the sections, I know this is some of the county auditor, but, or in section 15, the plan directors will stamp the exempt, the exempt subdivision approved.
There is a violation there, for sure. So you didn't approve it one way or the other, it didn't matter what we call it or what you call it, you didn't stamp it exempt, you didn't call it exempt. Says so right in the rules, but you're, they're supposed to come to you.
I don't, that I don't know, but I mean, I'm just gonna take all of those subdivisions that'll be submitted to the plan director or staff for review. If the plan director or staff determines that the proposed subdivision meets the standards to be exempt from the subdivision plat process, he or she shall stamp the exempt subdivision as approved. So you can't just avoid your office. Even this one particularly, they need to bring this, they need to bring that survey to you and you, the way this reads, shall deem it exempt or not and stamp it approved if you deem it exempt, the way I read that.
What if they didn't do it as a, like when we first said, what if they didn't do it as a complete survey and they just sold off for one parcel? I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you what's a property.
I just think that for, and we've talked about this for an hour now, and now I'm a little gone along with it, but I think I would make the suggestion that at the very minimum, you, your office contacts this developer and at the very minimum, you get some plans in front of you that you would stamp exempt if you deem they be exempt from this, the way ours, where this reads. Because it, and like, at the very minimum, they can't just bypass your office.
Okay. Okay. How are we gonna, okay, fine. How are we gonna stop this from happening again then?
That's what we need to think about, because I don't think anybody knows.
So if I wanted to do an actual subdivision, like I wanna plot it out, I wanna make woodhurst, but I'm gonna put it out south.
I already got.
Yeah. What would be my first step? How do I know that?
You go to the county list, then.
Okay.
Normally you would.
Look at the checklist.
You, when you would call your surveyor, I guess, you would tell them you wanna make a subdivision, you own this property and you wanna make a subdivision, and then they would say, your county has a woman's residence in zoning, and then that would kick start it, I assume. I don't know if it's true, I just assume, because like, you don't just know that. Somebody would have to tell you that.
Well, surveyable, but it is surveyable now.
Yeah, I mean, every county has its own rules, so I assume that would probably be an initial point. Like, say.
But any way that it goes in order, I mean, because I hear what you're saying with finding out what the intention is. But I can, I have the intention of doing one thing now and then that change sometime later. But if I've already gotten it on the map, that this piece of property is divided off from this larger piece of property, that point is where, to me, it needs to replay. Not when it's sold, not when it's transferred, but when we have divided this piece of property.
One time.
Gotta figure out the way to catch that, right? That might be a chore. Well, not to take anything away from, from people who want to deed off property to their family members, you know, I respect that, but I think Deere brought up some good things a few minutes ago. You know, what's the intent of the land usage? And if we need to think about concentration of residences and because of public safety, access. And my big thing is, is this person, person dividing this property In parcels? For the development? For, for financial gain, is this person a developer? Or an individual that just wants to deed off a couple pieces of property? My opinion still is, even though you may stamp it exempt. That this person over here on 056 is a developer. But our, our rules say, well, they don't say plain. So. You can't, you can't fault them for that. But we, we need to be aware, this, this won't be the only one that comes up, I'm sure, there's probably some out there that. Been like that for years, and nobody just thought anything about it, but, you know. When you've got more than two lots for sale with two different realtors. Of property that you own, and you put a new road in. You're a developer. You're developing the property for gain, for profit, period, plain and simple. So something to think about. Now, moving along, thinking ahead ourselves. Does anybody know about where we are as far as wrapping all this up? So someday you can present it to the three commissioners and we can vote on it, and. I think we pretty well got through everything, except this, these, these zone maps, right?
Yeah, I guess, that's what I'm sorry.
So do, do we need those zone maps? Just, just because we, we think this area is commercial, do we need to? Officially make it a commercial zone? These little pockets that we have here today, I always use. Morgan's Market area as a good example, and it's actually growing, because we've got a new dollar store out there now. So you, you've got about seven or eight actual businesses out there now. You got a child egg here, you got a diesel truck place, you got Cottonium Enterprises, you got Morgan's Market, you got the Dollar Store, and you got the Used Lumber Yard. Then you've got Diesel Repair. Yeah. And then, and then the other, and then the legitimate actual sawmill, so.
I would, I would think you have this on it, I'm curious. I mean, you have all the rules for all these zones, and you got to know what the zone is, so you have to follow the rules, but I don't know what that would be.
I don't think it would be that difficult to define a zone, I mean, if you get businesses in a.
It's by, I have talked to the mapping company about how other counties do it, and it is by property line. You don't like, just like make a square, it's not like this square. It, it'll be like odd shaped with the property lines.
Oh, okay.
I know that much.
Okay.
But I know that like. It could be like a really odd shape, if you, you know.
Yeah, kind of like.
So they, they don't have to do it like.
Shading windows.
Yeah, it does not feel like walked off, it's just by property, property lines is by the zone, so. But whenever you go in and split it on, the property line is like, oh. And then there's might need to be exactly, just throwing that out there, but that's something that, what that comes about, we need to remember that.
Okay, well, I'd like for you people to think about what would be the easiest way to tackle that, and I suppose it would be to. Start with the. Assessor's office, and get a list. And cross-reference it with an area as far as what's. What's taxed commercial. To me, that would be about the easiest way to decide what little. You know, like around Pecan, around Canvasburg, you know. Little York. So you being the key contact person in that, I know. I know you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be out for a while later.
Oh, yeah, by the way, just a heads up, I could be at next month's meeting, or I could not, just depends on how my neurosurgeon appointment goes on the 27th, so. I could be out for a while, and then we are future. You're up in on me, I don't necessarily know that it's not, it's not like you, I just have something going on, so.
Next meeting is what day?
11th of July. Third. Yep. July 3rd. Is, do we want to bump it to the 10th? Probably, when will you be back?
Never.
August? Okay.
Six days. Oh, that was long. Then I'm happy to wear one on a bike for Sunday else.
What about you, Danielle? Third or the 10th is that?
It's the third.
July 1st.
The third is on the first of that day.
Okay.
That's nice.
Okay.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Alright, we'll just keep it the same schedule then.
What do we have with Harrison County subdivision ordinances that were reviewed?
Oh, we were here. We, we passed that, voted on it in the past, and John's, I think John's in the process of kind of tweaking it, but. The. Yeah, we adopted Harrison County 5.0 regarding the performance model.
That is all we needed.
What's that?
That's all we were adding once upon a time.
Yeah, because.
Well, the other stuff that we added, but that was all actually not be there.
We already had.
Awesome.
And he was gonna double check and look through that, so it wasn't redundant or anything, but. For instance, in this subdivision, this current subdivision ordinance, it, it already had provisions for, for instance, like your drainage issues and. All those dirty details that need to be in there. So, yeah, we. We approved that. In, in regards to the performance model part of. Can we get my sheet back there? I guess we do. I'll make it, I'll make another dinner.
I'll do it.
Can you take it anymore?
I'll do it.
Can you take the notes?
Yes.